What's going on right now, okay? Call the meeting to order. Want to welcome everybody here tonight. A special night. Start out with a prayer by Pastor Steve Ayers by Lifeline Connect Church.
That's right. Lord, I thank you for today. I thank you for our weather. I thank you that you care for us. Lord, I pray for our council. I pray for the employees of the city. I pray for our police and fire departments. And, Lord, I pray that you keep them safe. I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance in all the decisions that they make. Lord, I pray that our lives bring glory and honor to you. I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Barth.
Here.
Beverly.
Present.
Bassett.
Here.
Jones. Oh, sorry, Ridgeway. Have it. Ridgeway.
On your own.
Flupper.
Here.
And Juan's absent.
Okay, you have in front of you the regular council minutes of January the 20th. Please approve.
Make motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Flupper.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay, approval bills.
I had a couple of questions, and I ask Kent before we fired up the meeting, but just for general knowledge, that 10,850 that I questioned for our own flow meters, which it describes, and 5,700 for EMS 511, and Cheryl is going to get the paperwork on that to explain exactly what all that entailed. Some of it was a bad oil leak on the truck, I understand. And other than that, I have no questions unless somebody else does.
I was going to ask on the Werler Inc. annual refuse contract, is that in line with how, I guess, how it has come in as far as?
Yeah, it's so much. It varies from month to month, right?
Correct.
The change is all depends on like good pickups.
But very little.
Yeah, it's not pretty consistent.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're on, I guess, a per unit basis with them?
Yes.
Not an annual contract?
That's right.
To serve?
Well, the contracts got per.
Yeah.
Dawn sends them addresses every month or whatever, then they bill us off of that.
I send them a bulk that we have billed, and they build exactly off of what we have billed.
Okay.
It varies due to the fact that we have people gone. If you're gone for a month or more, we will take your trash off such you're not setting anything out.
Okay.
And they know who our winter holds are and who they're not. So it does. And if we have a renter that rolls over, and it may be in the landlord's name for a month, there's no trash pickup provision.
Okay.
But it's pretty close every month.
Okay, we got a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Flupper.
Yes.
Okay, we have two proclamations tonight. The first one I'll read is, whereas February 1st through the 29th, 2020, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. Whereas, career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. And whereas, students and career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase student engagement and achievement. And whereas, career and technical education provides students career exploration opportunities earlier in the education experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework, as well as pursuit of established programs of study and career pathways. And whereas, leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to the skills gap in connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, and information technology. And whereas, career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas, ensuring that employers have access to a qualified workforce is a crucial step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continuing American economic growth and global competitiveness. Now, therefore, I, Ronald Jones, Mayor of Hicksville, Ohio, do hereby proclaim February 1st through the 29th, 2020, as Career and Technical Education Month. And I'll go to Ford County Business Month and present that to them. Then we have another one. Let's see, right here. Whereas, the Hicksville Historical Society will soon celebrate 45 years of experience, existence. And whereas, Mervin Applegate began the journey in 1975 in an effort to preserve and renovate the St. Paul Episcopal Church through donations and fundraisers. And whereas, Alan Hilbert took up the torch in the 80s to continue Mr. Applegate's work and made it his mission to relocate the historic AP Edgerton Land Office building next to the library. Whereas, these humble moments to Hicksville's history has been used over the years to house historic objects, become the venue for weddings, baptisms, reunions, meetings, and much more. Whereas, Mary Smith, along with Jan Heffelfinger and Diane Graham, have continued the task of preserving Hicksville's history and make it relevant in today's age. Whereas, the Huber Opera House was the next neglected building to receive attention. The transformation has been a long, hard road, but these three ladies were up to the task. The Huber is now beautifully restored to its former glory. Whereas, these ladies have led the charge and helped create a volunteer base in Hicksville next to none. Therefore, I, Ron Jones, Mayor of Hicksville, do hereby proclaim February 5th Hicksville Historical Society Day.
I'm sorry, Ron.
You're all right.
Thank you so much.
I do. Time, picture time. Ron, you go get it.
And then there's one for the Miami District. Okay. Okay. And you have carnations, or I guess you call them carnations, or flowers, whatever you call them, for ladies?
Corsages.
Corsages, yeah. Very nice.
Congratulations.
Maxwell Ish to address council.
All right, so I'm Max Ish. We're just out here, Troop 216 in Hicksville. I'm asking permission to build a gazebo on the corner of Arthur and Main where the old rain garden was. Before I go forward with any planning, I need permission from the council to go with it. Now I can start planning and bring it on to Eagle Board Review to get their approval to build it. Once that's done, I can bring the completed project back to the council. So, thank you.
Max, I have a question. Will this be built so that it could be moved?
No, it'll be just there.
It'll be posted in the ground?
Yeah.
There's no way you could set it on skids?
No, it's going to be in the ground, so.
But you asked Grandpa to build enough raised there, you know nothing has to be one-way.
Yeah.
It couldn't be built unmovable?
No, we're just going to, it's going to get put in, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nobody's asking for permission, right?
Yes.
I thought we weren't going to do anything with that corner lot.
Well, he was either going to do there, or Ron.
Or as a park.
Mentioned beside the bank, the vacant lot there.
My thought on this, I think what you're doing is a wonderful idea. I just don't know. I want people to use it and picking aside, I'm not sure. Me personally, I think that's the best site for it. Limited parking, and then the houses around it. You definitely want people to use it and things with it, keep it up, and that kind of thing. So that was my thought behind it, was if that was the best spot for it. I think we had asked maybe if there was some other possibilities, some other places in the community for it, so.
Fish had said something about the vacant lot next to the Hicksville Bank.
Well, here's the thing. We don't own that lot, and what I would like is, we don't have anything invested in that lot down there. The county gave it to us after the demo of the house. We've got a young man here in Hicksville that wants to step forward and do something for the village, and I don't think that we should blink an eye and worry about who's going to use it and how often it'll be used. Let's get behind this young man and say, hey, build it. That's just my opinion.
I'd like to see what kind of material and everything's made out of. And maintenance free, some of it's maintenance free.
Yeah, it would be a cool sturdy vinyl, something that wouldn't be painted, wouldn't need repainted, wouldn't fade.
Is it going to be flush with the ground? Is it going to be a step up? ADA compliant?
It's handicap accessible, and it'd be, like, all the logistics on this, we have to figure out first, but the first step in for him to be able to do this project is to get your guys' okay. And then he can go in, and he can get a builder, he can figure out the materials that we're going to use, how much it's going to cost, how he's going to do the fundraising, but in order for him to even take that next step, he's got to get the okay from you guys. And then, once he gets that, then he can start putting everything together, then he's got to take it to the Eagle Board Review, get their okay, and then we're hit the ground running. But we need your guys' okay for him to go ahead.
I make a motion that we allow Maxwell Ish to build the gazebo on that lot. This is tentative upon him getting the okay from the other entities that he has to get it from.
Are we going to approve the design?
We will need to see everything that he's going to do, but first, the main thing he needs right now is permission from us. We can set up guidelines later.
Do you have to have a, I guess, an exact location prior to move? Or would it be okay to assume that you could proceed on?
Our permission.
On a lot or property that the village owns?
We picked that property.
Whether it's the park or the, I guess, what I'm, the reason I'm asking is because of, you know, approval of design and those sort of things, would it be okay to have approval to proceed and?
On village property.
On village property? Without a given specific address? Without giving an exact location? So if?
It would be more helpful if we had an exact location, so that way whoever designs it can design for that specific area, which, I mean, we don't really have a whole lot of different terrains around, but that would be a little bit more helpful. And the only reason we picked that area is because it had been talked about years ago about putting a gazebo there, and it just didn't really happen. I know parking is very limited right there in that area, but there is a lot of foot traffic on that road. There's people going to the park, there's people going down to football games, and it gets seen by not only just residents in our community, but from all over the place, especially coming in and out of town, going to all the sporting events or going to the park. And, you know, Memorial Day Parade walks right by there, that'd be kind of nice, too. But that's why we kind of picked that area, because it's high-traffic area.
Is the beautification committee still working with the designer?
Not on that property.
So that was all put on hold as a result of conversation last winter, or I guess, we're still in winter.
The last thing they did with that property was turn it back to grass.
Sorry, I guess, I was under the impression that there was still a designer that was working on?
As far as I know, it was not.
They were talking about the guy from Bryan, they were trying to, the guy that runs the Bryan Park or something.
Right, there was, I think, two or three people that walked it fairly recently.
They did, they gave the beautification a couple of different designs, but that's basically all that's there. I think they pretty much washed it. I mean, I hate to, like, speak for everybody else, but I'm pretty sure they're done with that property.
We had a lot of concerns on the amount of hours for maintaining and keeping up. People in Bryan, they spend, you know, that's a one or two-person full-time job of maintaining it, weeding everything, trimming everything all the time, and we didn't have manpower. We're looking to put the manpower into doing that all the time.
And I guess that would be my question, as far as orientation. So is this a multiple-phase thing? So if we put a gazebo, is it just going to be a gazebo in grass? But as far as giving some forethought into location for the whole lot, because if we're going to put a gazebo there, that lends to future planning with something there.
Right, right. Now, his main project is just the gazebo. And we're talking some very low-maintenance landscaping around it, like different river rocks, and just keeping it basic, but keeping it nice for somebody to go to.
I thought we were talking about selling that lot.
We talked about that, too.
I guess I would make a motion to approve that the village approve his request to build the gazebo on village-owned property. And?
They're preferring an address, though. I mean, why can't we give him an address? You can change an address.
Well, that's what I wasn't sure as far as?
What other properties are there?
Well, the park, basically.
Oh, okay.
That's why I wanted to have you have built it on skids, so that if anything ever changed, it could be relocated.
Isn't that something, you know, Ron, we can look into also?
And I would really hope you could. If it was built on skids, there shouldn't be any question to anything. Only thing we should do is bless this young man for having the ambition and the willpower to want to do something for our community. Kids that want to get involved in the community are very few and far between in today's society. If you can't sit there and do it with your thumbs, they don't want to do it. Bless you, Max.
And I just noticed, like, the pavilions that we have in town, you know, they're used for picnics and kids hang out in them and things like that. If he's going to build and spend all this time and energy and thought, I would want it be used. We've already had a garden down there, thinking people are going to come down and look at the flowers, and we put a bench in and a sidewalk and?
I have seen people go down there, though, and actually sit at the bench. I mean, it was more so for it, come to be.
And we don't.
Got a weedy.
Right, right, but it's not something that, you know, I notice every time, but you definitely want people to utilize the project and?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, you're going to take his motion. Okay.
Yours is going to be with that address, basically.
I just said?
So we withdraw your motion.
Billy Joan property is what he said.
You want Billy Joan property, or are you going to use that address?
Now, talking about being built on skids, being it built on skids versus a permanent structure, if it's built on skids, I think, absolutely, I mean, I would be okay with proceeding with that.
And that's up in the air. We have to remember, guys, that he's not asking, he's not going to start in the morning building this thing. This is just permission so that he can go forward.
Yes.
With his other entities and get them can?
So, first, second, Ron? I'm second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Flupper.
Yes.
Bassett.
No.
Beverly.
Most certainly.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next on the agenda is bargain commissions.
Thank you, Max. Thank you. Thanks, Max.
Bargain commissions, beautification committee met, but no minutes were presented. Council committee reports. I see the water sewer committee met the 25th.
Those minutes were in your package.
Yeah. They got here after it had been typed.
Oh, I said a Friday morning.
I know, we're on time.
I like those.
Yeah, Friday morning. Dawn, help me with that. Thank you, Dawn. But?
What did I do?
You helped me get my minutes into the package ahead of time. So, appreciate that. Like I said, we were, there's a call for certification of statements with seven different engineering firms for the Defiance County Lift Station, Defiance Avenue Lift Station. Narrowed it down to three. We're going to be having interviews February?
12.
12. With those three engineering firms, having one-on-ones with the committee and Jeff and Kent. And then we just talked about the upcoming projects that we got coming in line with the community and stuff. It was a good meeting, had a lot of information, and getting Taylor's on the committee now, along with Ron Beverly, and just getting everybody up to speed on what projects we have coming up and what we need to do.
Okay, any questions for Mike? Okay, administrators report.
Really nothing obvious mention. Later on, when you get the citizens advisory about the proposed well site, Mr. Kitson wants to do it in the Fay Pioneer area. If you want anybody to go to that meeting on the 12th, I will probably be in Columbus that day. If anybody wants to go, you might want to think about it.
Is there any, I mean, it's basically at the EPA's discretion, right? That's really not public input, it's not really a swaying factor in this?
Well, as far as this one, I don't think so. His future plans, there might be some citizen input they'll listen to.
Different from any well application that's ever really gone through, this particular situation, public input has been weighed more than ever before. So it is very valuable in this situation because the state recognizes the potential issues that go along with this, as opposed to, like us, the village, we're putting in a well application to put down a new one for ourselves. Nobody's complaining about that. We're not causing ripples in anybody else's situations. So to answer your question, yes, more than any other typical well approval, they have, if you look at the date on there, the last meeting they had was last March, and they've weighed public opinion all this time. So it is counting a lot more than as typical.
Plus, I'll show my senior brain there, that they're having a meeting in March, but there's no meeting at all.
But you said that, because I was thinking, I've got to go repeat.
That was last year.
Last minute, 2019. Is it transport metered?
So, and they did approve, they did approve, right? That says they give?
They approved the approval.
One well.
One well.
Whereas, like what we're doing for ourselves, we got an entire site approved without being specific about how many wells we're putting there. They're only allowing this situation one at a time, and he has to repeat the process for everything additional. So that's where the public input has really shaped this differently than your typical well approval.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if they have changed the direction of their main plan of, you know, supplying heavy amounts of water to communities?
Once there was so much public backlash, that has all become hush-hush. Nobody knows his plans from day to day, and he didn't even come to that meeting. I went to it. He didn't even show up. So all we know is what was last said.
All right. Memory's failing. I'm going to be tied up this Wednesday with the workers' comp lady. She's got to be in my office. She's going to freeze. Anyway, she's coming for a meeting. So for a few hours on Wednesday, maybe I should just weed out. But anyway, from probably 10 till at least noon, I'll be tied up with her home workers' comp. Otherwise, I'm not talking, I'm just standing there.
Laugh once in a while, yeah?
Okay, any questions for Kent?
Need some room?
Okay, solicitors report. Troy?
First thing I have is first reading ordinance 2020-02 by caption only, and ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. I see you got listed as an emergency, Cheryl. I'll leave that up to you.
Yes.
Okay. Cheryl, we'd like you to have it as an emergency.
Suspend the rules. Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Flupper.
Yes.
So then, third reading of ordinance 2020-02 by caption only, and ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Flupper.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
And next is ordinance 2020-03 by caption only, and ordinance authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency. Again, this is something that's, I think, fairly routine, isn't it?
This is the annual, and it depends on how soon we're going to make the purchase of the land, because this, part of this is part of it.
Okay, probably, I get hopeful within the month, they're working on the paperwork and everything at the title office, so.
Except if they pass it as an emergency, we're done with it, if the money's there, ready to go.
Yeah, probably just, so we're ready.
Make motion to suspend the rules. Second. Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Flupper.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
And then, third reading, resolution 2020-01, resolution authorizing the establishment of a Hicksville Downtown Design Review Board and adopting design standards and declaring an emergency. I did more research than I ever wanted to. On the issue, there is, I would say, some concern, but after speaking to Dennis Miller, he said that other communities that they work with at Mommy Valley had raised some of the same issues, and in the past, what they had done, which we certainly could do with ours, is in both the resolution as well as the actual establishment of the Design Review Board, they've included language that basically says that those design standards only apply in the ones that the federal government advises, only apply in situations where federal funding is being sought. And that's how they've gotten around that issue, and he said they've never had a problem with it, they've done it in other communities. So as far as, you know, what we could do is in our, like, in my resolution that I have here is make a specific reference that, you know, the committee's job is, because as I understood it before, I think there was some support for having a committee regardless of these standards, but having one for downtown design work, but also saying that the standards set forth by the Secretary of, compliance with the standards set forth by the Secretary of Interior for jobs that involve federal funding only, or something to that effect. And then when we get the board?
Well, we didn't want to lose control of what was being done.
On everything else. Now, on the stuff where the owners are seeking federal funding, they will be bound by the terms of?
Can you rewrite this?
Yes. And the resolution part would be easy. It's then when we set up the board, and we're going to have to have, for lack of a better term, our actual standards, that's, not that it won't, that it will be difficult, but that's where we'll have to be specific and say, you know, these guidelines set up by, you know, department, we could have our own guidelines and then say, oh, yeah, and if you're pursuing federal funding of any type, you also have to meet these standards.
And we could also work with Dennis and get something from him?
Yeah. That we could? I just talked to him again the last week about it after I got done doing my research, but he said, yeah, I can't remember, but he named a handful of communities around the area that had that issue come up, and he said that was the kind of consensus on how to deal with it, and they, there are some that have, for two, three years, four years, have had that language in there and have never had a problem.
Would you prefer that we take a vote for you to table this?
Probably table, somebody make a motion to table it, and then I'll tweak it, get it set out, and then we can, and if we need to, I don't know what the timetable is on that grant, is the, I don't know if anybody knows that, that the people that are currently looking to do something, if there's a timing element.
Do you, Ron?
The last I've heard, it's still.
It's still up there.
Mid-wed or whatever, but beyond that, I don't know.
Okay. Probably table... somebody make a motion to table it, and then I'll tweak it, get it set out, and then we can... and if we need to, I don't know what the table is on that grant is the... I don't know if anybody knows that, that the people that are currently looking to do something, if there's a timing element.
Do you, Ronnie?
Last I've heard, it's still...
It's still up there.
Whatever, but beyond that, I don't know.
Okay. I mean, we could do it like at the next meeting or something. I didn't know...
I'll make that motion to table this until you...
And then I'll bring it back, and we can always pass it as an emergency if we had a timing issue at the next...
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
All right, Barth?
Yes.
Beverley?
Yes.
Clapper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bridgeway?
Yep.
Then a couple of other issues. I communicated directly with Larry. I know the people in Catholic Church had inquired about. And then, did you get my email, Larry? I sent you an email back a few days after you sent it. And I went and looked and did not find anything regarding like there being an easement or something down there. Kent went through all the village records, he said, and not surprisingly, didn't find anything. So I think the way to approach that is, we don't have any problem vacating the alley. And however we need to do this, I got the information from before that has their attorney, the bishop's attorney and everything. We probably should just... we'll go ahead and pass it on the condition that they give us an easement back so we can access that manhole and basically so they know they can't, you know, want them to build in a whatever garage back there to house their stuff and putting it right where we can't access our manhole.
When I did some work for the Catholic Church, did some digging or paving or something down there, Ron Wheeler swore to God that that easement went with his property, that that was his legal easement for that alley.
That alley? Well, I mean, that alley's an open alley right now, so it's a public... so the deal out it would be is if we vacate it, and I guess I would have to look at it again, the paperwork, if it's vacated, it goes to the adjoining owners, so...
Which is themselves.
Which is themselves. So then they would have the whole thing then. So you're saying you think on Ron's property, Ron Wheeler's property, that he's saying that he had, and I did not see that in the records. And I went down there and looked at them. But I guess with his name in particular, maybe I'll go and make sure it didn't get filed somewhere else and not get attached to the property.
His claim was the one off from High Street that goes between that house, that driveway in, and the church, and then another one that is out in that parking lot. Those are both his, and they were both recorded on his...
For the benefit for his property. Since you've mentioned that, I didn't see it in the land books going back to Catholic Church property and everything. But since you've mentioned a specific name, it wouldn't be the first time that we found a record that should have been attached somewhere that wasn't. So I'll double check that in the next couple of days.
If memory serves me correctly, that's probably only been 30 years ago. He had paperwork with him the day he told me about it.
Maybe it doesn't show up in the chain for the other one, but I'll check that address then. That will take very long. And then, assuming that's not an issue, and if it is an issue, we could still vacate the alley, but he's got an easement for his benefit. That would still mean the same thing. They couldn't build on it or anything like that. It would be their property, subject to the easement then. Right. Yeah. But we should clarify that so that everybody knows what the status is.
Can I get brought up to speed? I guess, what's the purpose? Why are they pursuing vacating the alley?
They own the Wheeler property now. They want to close that alley.
They want to close the alley for... In which case, they could do that, because if they own both the estates that are benefited by the easement and burdened by it, they could do what they want at that point and say there's no longer... they could undo the easement, basically, if that's what their desire is. I don't know what their plans are with that house, but... so that would make it a non-issue, but I'll still check and see if there's something there, because that may require a little more work on their end.
Well, this will just take the gray area out 50 years from the road.
I agree. So that's that. The land purchase I mentioned with Cheryl, talked to Mark Haver about it extensively. They're working on it in the title company, and I would expect around, probably by the end of the month, that's going to be ready to go. As far as I've heard, no problems or anything like that. It's just in process. And then Mr. Haynes, I had to... I didn't even think about this, but when I made contact with him, I had to update the agreement that I signed to him to account for two things. One, the change in the date, and the other for the change in the mayor. And that's been sent to him, and he said he would get it signed and get it sent back. Because when it was originally done back right before the end of the year, obviously Diane was still on it. And so we touched base on that. It was sent to him today with the changes and everything. So that should be right in line, too. The next thing, I think, in general. Yeah, I mean, I answered a few other questions for a few people on some other issues, but nothing that really requires counsel.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Troy. Police Chief Denny, do you have a report?
One thing I have is Chris Taylor has accepted the position as a full-time, so he'll be moving from part-time to full-time. He's going to last hard full-time till the February 26th, which is the start of the...
When you get all your people back up to speed, will you be going back to three people on days?
They'll be...
They'll put you eight total, right? I'm like eight. So when do we need to vote on him? My recommendation, is that tonight, or...
Well, the other issue is now that he's accepted it, now I can bring back at the next meeting the resolution about the vacation and the stuff we talked about.
Our next meeting is the 17th.
Yeah. Okay. So he's going to start when?
26th.
Okay, we're good.
26th.
All right. Anything else, Chief?
What, is there questions about having three on days, or what?
I just wondered.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Kramer?
I don't have anything unless you have a question for me.
No questions?
Moving right along?
Yeah.
I do have to get you with you later after any meeting.
Okay, you got representative from the park, right? Or you got anything to report?
At our most recent meeting, we discussed plans going forward.
You want to step up the podium, Cheryl?
For those of you who don't know, I'm Andrew Lawrence. I represent the school district on the park board. The Little League and Hicksville Girls' Softball Association, I recently presented some plans with some things that they would like to see at the park in the future. We are looking into some ways that we can best utilize the facilities that we have, and also looking at potential expansion and how we can do that and be good stewards about that. It's not anything immediate that we're looking at, but just being able to make the facility something that the whole village can be proud of, and also make it most beneficial for our kids. We also had a few other minor issues. There's some building that's going to be going on over at the pool, which should be starting anytime if it hasn't already. We were apprised of a situation where the beautification committee has grants for trees that they want to be able to put down at the park, talking about best places to put them and how to do that. And they've begun hiring or getting applications for summer lifeguards and doing the pool up and running. We had a minor issue with breaking with some damaged locks, but those have been taken care of. Nothing was stolen. And we got an update about day in the park that'll be coming up this summer. Any questions?
That date's been set, right? It's in June?
Yes, it's in June. Last week, I think, of June.
Yeah, I have it written down. I don't have it.
Something. I didn't write that one down, so...
I think it's June 27th.
Thank you, Ray.
Yes, sir.
What are you building at the pool?
I believe they're updating a wall that was down there. That was something that was up before I came on the board, so I've been to one meeting, so my information's a little...
New guy drew the short straw.
They signed me up for the first time. Okay.
Hazing. I think they call that hazing.
Yes, I think that is what it is.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl, fiscal officer's report?
Yeah, the fund status, and it's not quite up to date for many reasons. I've also put in the budget for 2020 for the cemetery that I got from Robin Bauer, and the other side has their financial report for 2019. You have the list of the revolving loans that are current, and a statement of our franchise fee. That's for the fourth quarter of 2019. And that's all I've got. On the table tonight, I put the income tax and utility collections.
Thank you. Any questions for Cheryl? Mayor's report. Got a couple things. The dumpsters that people put out, I think it's working great. Some people leave them out there throughout the week. So the rules are that they're supposed to be off the street by 7 o'clock that night. Again, I drove through town. There's quite a few out yet, so get the word out there to just make the town look a little better. I would appreciate it. And then Kent and I went, met with the commissioners, was that Tuesday, Tuesday or Wednesday last week, Thursday, last week, doesn't matter. There's a program that's been... it was last week. It's called CHIP. It's Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. And people in low income can get help, must have a household income below 80% of medium income. So in other words, one person, income of $36,000, they can get help. Two people, $41,000. So there's a lot of money out there to help people. The one thing you can use it for is roofs and gutters, lead paint issues, heating systems. You have to trouble your furnace. They'll help you. Water heaters, plumbing, water, electrical, structural. So if people feel that they could benefit from this, give me a call or Mommy Valley Planning Organization. Call Kent. He's got the information. But you can call me, too. So people can use this. There's money out there to help low income.
I've got some flyers out front.
Oh, do you? Okay. I need it. So I'd like to see the citizens take advantage of that. So that's all I have. Anything else? These that come before this council?
Through this program, do they have approved contractors, or is it...
I believe so.
I think Mommy Valley handles all this.
They bring... I've seen them around town. So just, I guess, for general information, they would just apply and then work with Mommy Valley to arrange the work to get done?
And Mommy Valley pays the contractors. The homeowners wouldn't have any money...
Yeah, there's no money.
At all.
It used to be 50-50, but now it's just to help the people in need. It's there.
Okay, that's very good.
And if they go to their website, it explains a lot more in detail. If you go into their housing...
But just type in Mommy Valley Planning, and it should pop up.
Is this something that, I mean, will you guys run anything in the paper about this?
They'll put notes in it from... so it has the packet and stuff in there.
Okay. Seems like a great program.
Yes, it is. So anything else needs brought before the council tonight? Make a motion to adjourn? Second?
Too early. We got to talk some more.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Bridgeway?
Yes.
Clapper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverley?
Whatever it is, I'm going to ask you.
Mar?
Maybe.